Good morning. The hour of nine o'clock having been reached on the seventh day of September 2010, we'll call this meeting of Placer County Board of Supervisors to order with a flight suit led by Supervisor Montgomery this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ann, if you would please read the statement. Meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of September 7th, 2010. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, this is time for public comments. This is when any member of the public may address the board on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that the board cannot take action on items raised under public comment. Anybody wish to address the board?
Again, sir, this is items not on the agenda?
Pardon?
On items not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Okay. That's right.
I'm Gerald Brody, live in Melvista. I'm retired from CSOC a couple of years, and I'm here to speak on behalf of all the other retirees.
And again, sir, the board has agendas and actions in regard to a contract that will be impacting the retirees. That would be the appropriate time to speak to that, as at our 9:45 timed item.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, sir. Please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. My name is Ralph Gibson, and I'm the program manager for the Placer County Museums. And on behalf of the museums, I'd like to invite all of you and everyone here to the opening of our new exhibit Fashioning a New Identity, which opens this Thursday at 5:00 p.m. in the historic courthouse in Auburn on the first floor. And this exhibit focuses on the flappers of the 1920s. And on display will be examples of our flapper dresses, as well as accessories that help tell the story of how these women took control of their lives and fashioned a new identity for themselves and declared their independence. So I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, anyone else under public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to supervisor committee reports. Any members of the board have anything to report out at this point? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything on consent that any board member wishes to have removed for discussion? And seeing none, any member of the public wish to address anything that is on consent? Have it taken off for discussion?
We approve it.
Okay, we have a motion Rockholm, Second Holmes to approve consent. Roll call, please.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Wykan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Uler?
Aye. Okay. We have today just a couple of very brief department head items and then two timed items. We are going to go ahead and take our closed session right now, probably be back in time to take department head items prior to our 9:30 timed item in regard to planning. So the board is going to adjourn into closed session.
The board will take up the items on page three, item four of its agenda.
Thank you. We'll be back probably 10, 15 minutes for department head items.
Motion on authorizing CEO's office development implement administrative manual. I heard motion Rockholm, second Holmes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. And as a part of that, we have a couple of recommendations coming forward on a couple of different policies.
On item 3B, what we're asking is this is a series of policy and technical changes to clean up the administrative rules. It includes the implementation or adoption of two new draft policies, two amendments to ordinance, the deletion of one article of county code, and the deletion of seven administrative rules. Just to summarize, ultimately, the PAM committee is recommending all sixteen of the admin rules will be deleted. We're bringing the first part of that here today to you. Five of the seven deletions do not have substantive changes in any way, shape, or form. They're just being moved. Two of the administrative rule chapters are being replaced by the proposed vehicle policy and the proposed volunteer policy, of which I can go into some detail if you so desire. While these are, at this point in time, we also have developed, I want to say, a charge-out rate policy. And basically, what the PAM committee would intend to do is bring forward those policies and procedures to your board that have policy implication. Other documents, such as the charge-out rate policy, we would intend, as a technical document, to have the county executive officer be authorized to just implement those. So with that, I won't go into much detail unless you have questions around those two new policies, and I would ask that you would take action to approve the, those actions in the board.
Questions by board members? Seeing no questions by board members, any members of the public have any questions on these policy recommendations that are being submitted? Thank you for the time to dive into those a little deeper from last meeting. Haven't pulled them off last meeting.
Motion Rockholm, second by Montgomery, to approve the recommended amended ordinances and delete administrative rules. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
If I could say something?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Since we have a little bit of time, I'd like to thank the work of all the folks who've been working on this, from the cost-saving committees to the administrative departments. This is not necessarily a fund deep type of document, not like a recreation plan or something else, but all of our county departments have administrative functions. And the purpose of this is to update those functions, or those ways they do business to make them more efficient, make them more interpretable in terms of how the employees have to adhere to them. And it's taken quite a bit of work by this group to pull these all together to make sure we look at other code compliance issues. So it's probably accumulation of at least a dozen meetings, many hours. At those meetings and work outside of those, so it's not lost in terms of the importance of this saving money for the county in the long run and making our rules far more discernible to those folks who have to administer them as well as have to abide by them in departmental land out there. So, thank you very much for your work.
Okay, that concludes our department head items. We have two timed items, a planning item at 9:30, and then the personnel-related item at 9:45. So, we've got about six minutes until the 9:30 timed items, so the board will recess briefly and be back at 9:30 to take the planning item. Okay, we'll move it up a little bit closer. Okay, we will resume our board meeting with our 9:30 timed items. This is a public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance amending zoning ordinance section seventeen dot zero six zero dot zero nine zero in regard to notification of the various county MACs regarding county-initiated zoning text amendments.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Paul Thompson from Planning Services. Based on direction from your board earlier this year, staff is requesting approval of an amendment to the Placer County zoning ordinance to require a notification of all municipal advisory councils of county-initiated zoning text amendments. This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their June 24 meeting, and the staff is bringing forward their recommendation. Just as a side note, there's one minor technical change that we'd like to make to the actual ordinance when it's time to do that. And here to present the report is Crystal Jacobson.
Thank you, Paul. So, the item before you today is a proposed amendment to the ordinance, section seventeen point zero six zero zero nine zero B, to require notification of all county-initiated zoning text amendments to the county municipal advisory councils. So just to give you some background, as Paul noted, at a January 26 board hearings, our staff provided your board with a general fund work program update. And at that hearing, your board expressed a desire for some of those work programs or projects to be presented to the county MACs. Your board then directed staff to provide a report to the Planning Commission clarifying the MAC planning process responsibilities, and to have the commission consider a modification process for notification to the MACs when county-initiated projects or programs are proposed. Accordingly, staff reported to the commission on April 8th, where they directed staff to explore a modification to the zoning ordinance. Staff then returned to the commission at its June 24 hearing, where the commission considered the proposed zoning text amendment before you today, and they took action to recommend approval of that ordinance to your board. So, real quick, I'm just going to give you some background on the MACs in the county. Your board established MACs throughout the unincorporated areas of Placer County, beginning with the Sheridan MAC, which was created in 1978. Since that time, fourteen MACs have been established, including the Donner Summit MAC, which was just recently approved by your board on August 24. And then to also give you some background on sort of the current process, how we deal with county-initiated projects right now with respects to the MAC responsibility. Proposed changes to the zoning ordinance are largely initiated by the county. Occasionally, we get some in, but not a lot from a developer. All ZTA's are heard by the Planning Commission before they come to your board. However, based upon the MAC handbook, they are not required, county-initiated ZTA's are not required to undergo MAC review to be presented to the MAC. So it has not been typically the planning departments or planning services practice to present to all of those county-initiated zoning text amendments before the MACs. However, we do provide notification to the MACs for all projects that are scheduled for the Planning Commission and the board, so they do see notification that those projects are going to hearing. And then in addition to that, upon request of the Planning Commission or your board, we do present specific county-initiated projects before the MACs for their consideration. So, the proposed ZTA before you today has been prepared to section seventeen sixty zero nine zero. It includes the incorporation of a new subsection under that section, which would be B, and it would address the referral of all county-initiated zoning text amendments to all MACs. And then with respect to the fiscal impacts of this amendment, the proposed amendment may result in an increased number of staff presentations at MAC meetings, where we otherwise wouldn't be going at this time. Therefore, it may likely increase general fund costs if the need for staff presentations result in overtime. However, as it is the current practice for all SEEDRA divisions today, managers work with staff to flex their hours when night meetings are required, and thereby they do minimize the need for overtime. So here's a summary of the proposed amendment. The new zoning text would read, "Notice of any proposed amendment to the text of this chapter seventeen that is initiated by the county and that is not associated with an application for a private project shall be provided to all the municipal advisory councils in accordance with the subsection one. At least sixty days prior to the date of the proposed amendment is scheduled to be heard by the Planning Commission, the Planning Director shall notify in writing the Chair and Secretary of each municipal advisory council, describe the proposed amendment, and offer to present it to the municipal advisory council for its review and comment. The Chair may request that the proposed amendment be presented to the municipal advisory council by contacting the planning department within fifteen days, or as soon as possible after receipt of the information. And the proposed amendment shall be scheduled for presentation to the municipal advisory council as soon as feasible thereafter. No zoning text amendment proposed by the county shall be invalid in the event it is not, for any reason, reviewed by a municipal advisory council prior to its hearing by the Planning So with that, staff brings forward the Planning Commission's recommendation that the Board of Supervisors adopt the attached ordinance amending the zoning ordinance section seventeen point zero six zero point zero nine zero B, to require notification of all county-initiated zoning text amendments to the county municipal advisory councils. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Board members have any questions on this item? Superintendent Montgomery?
Crystal, thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. So, the situation right now is, if I understand it, is the MACs are notified of the ZTA's, but historically there hasn't been any codified process to actually have them request something be formally presented?
That's correct. This process would really formalize that notification.
And again, my understanding on this is, if my MACs are anything to go by, they're notified about any number of ZTA's, and really, very few of them are actually brought to the MACs. They don't, it doesn't seem that they want to hear all ZTA's throughout the county.
Well, in the past, we would notify them of it going to hearing, and so, under that case, no, it hasn't, there haven't been a lot. But if a board member or the Planning Commission shows interest in any of those, and maybe they're hearing from their MACs that there's interest, then we do present before the MACs.
Okay. And I know that certainly at NETREC and the Squaw Valley Act, there's always someone in the audience from SEEDRA. I don't know if that's just a standard practice that SEEDRA sends somebody to the MACs, but is there a potential to, when we do have these zoning text amendments and the MACs want to hear them, utilize that person who's already there to present?
We try to. It largely depends upon the zoning text amendment and its complexity. So if it was a really complex amendment, typically, we would send the staff that's working on it, particularly if there's, you know, a lot of stakeholders involved or whatnot.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other comments or questions by board members? When this item was first brought to our board, my primary concern was the, I don't want to say practice, but the sometimes occurrence of the Planning Commission requiring that something be taken to the MAC, basically telling staff, "Take this out to the MACs and get the..." And what's important to me is the language that I read in there, that notification will be made of availability to the MACs, but ultimately, it's the MAC chairman that determines whether or not an item is going to be heard by the MAC.
Yes.
And hopefully, that direction is clear, so that in the event in the future that the Planning Commission provides a direction that says you have to take it to the MAC, really, you are, by this, you will make something available to them, but it's ultimately up to the chairman of the individual MACs, chairperson of the individual MACs, to make that decision as to whether or not item's going to be heard, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? This is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. And seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. And motion by Holmes, second by Montgomery. I'm sorry, yes, you have the typo that needs to be corrected on the record.
Attachment one, page five, at the bottom of the page where it says section one, and then it goes on to say subsection B of section seventeen point six oh point oh one oh. Instead of oh one oh, that should be point oh nine oh.
I was wondering when you were going to catch that. That one was bothering me for a while, right? Okay, you want to, one more time, just so that, real clear on the record what it is we are making amendment to right here, if you would please. Attachment one, page five.
Page five, yes. At the bottom of the page, section one, where it says section one, subsection B of section seventeen point six oh point oh one oh should be point oh nine oh.
Nine oh, okay, fantastic. I think that is clear enough for the record, and I'm sure that minor modification is acceptable to both maker of the motion and the second, and as duly noted by council. Y'all good with it, Tony?
I'm good.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. All right, thank you very much, Paul. Couple minutes before 9:45, and seeing as how there seems to be some interest in this item, we won't take it early. We will wait until 9:45, so we will go into brief recess for a couple minutes, and then come back at 9:45 for this item. Good morning. Welcome back to the September 7 meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. We continue our meeting with our 9:45 timed item. County Executive Office and Personnel will initiate the conversation in regard to negotiations with our Public Employees Organization. Mr. Whitmore, are you leading this for us this morning, or will Mr. Boyle introduce the item and then hand it off? Good morning, Mr. Boyle.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mike Boyle with the Executive Office. This morning, beginning on page seven of your agenda, is the 9:45 timed item having to do with labor relations. Sitting to my left, as you know, is Mr. Dick Whitmore, the county's lead negotiator, and at the other table, our Personnel Director Nancy Nittler and Therese Leonard from the Executive Office to answer any questions. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to Mr. Whitmore, and he'll lead us off.
Please.
Thank you very much. What I wanted to do today for this item on your agenda was to give you a brief overview of the negotiations that led us to today, some of the specific issues and problems we ran into in these negotiations, and then a recommendation for what management staff thinks is the appropriate action by the board today. With regard to this overview, we began these negotiations with the PPEO Local 39 unit with a letter dated March 18, 2010, from the county to the union, inviting them to begin negotiations on a new contract to succeed the contract expiring June 30, 2010. At the outset of the negotiations, we ran into a series of problems. The first set of problems had to do with a series of letters that went back and forth between PPEO, the Placer Public Employees Organization, and Local 39 of the stationary engineers, a Sacramento union that apparently had been contracted by PPEO to assist in negotiations. to assist in negotiations. It was clear from this exchange of letters, some sent directly to the county, some indirectly, letters between the two organizations, where it became clear that there were serious disagreements between the two organizations as to who had the authority in these negotiations. That was an indicator, we feared, and hindsight confirmed, that there was going to be a problem. The second problem at the outset, when we had our first bargaining session, we asked the union to agree that the discussions at the table would be confidential. That is a typical ground rule in negotiations. Most all negotiations include a confidentiality ground rule. We have that rule right now with the deputy sheriffs in the negotiations we're having with them. The purpose of the rule is to assure free flow of information, communication, candor in discussions at the table, so that what is discussed stays at the table and doesn't appear somewhere in the press or in the public. The union refused that ground rule. Within just a couple of meetings, we started getting questions from members of the union who obviously had seen some of the proposals that had been exchanged, didn't understand them, couldn't figure out what the union was doing, was upset at the county. The confusion created by this release by the union of proposals was another signal of problems in these negotiations. And finally, at the outset of negotiations and continuing through the several months we were at the table, there were guest editorials, presidents' messages to the members, public statements and press releases from Local Thirty-nine, all of which accused the county of having plenty of money, denying that there was any economic problem. They even went so far as to accuse the county of what I think was probably a criminal allegation of defrauding the public and employees. It sounded, especially at the outset of negotiations, but continuing, it sounded more like a battle cry than it did the sort of collaborative, cooperative approach that you hope to get when you're looking to reach compromises and negotiate an agreement. We started the negotiations, we completed eleven bargaining sessions, there was a partial twelfth one I'll mention in a minute. Our focus throughout these negotiations on behalf of the county was on systemic changes to the benefit package, including and especially pensions. The list of items is at page two of your staff report, where we tried to focus on those important issues that we felt were necessary for the county to protect it going forward. Actually, there were three more proposals the county made that are not on that list. There was one to freeze merit step increases for employees for a year. There was another to pay overtime at the Fair Labor Standards Act minimum, instead of the somewhat more generous way that Placer County pays overtime. And there was a proposal for a paid time off plan, which would combine sick leave and vacation in a way that would, for employees, allow more discretionary time off, but also allow some cost savings from a management perspective. After some discussion with the union, and over the course of several meetings, the county withdrew the freezing merit step, overtime, and paid time off proposals. We did that because the union had objected strongly, but we also did it because we hoped that the union would reciprocate and show some movement toward the county on the significant issues you see on page two of the staff agenda. They never did that. We tried to explain that although the county was not on the verge of bankruptcy today, we are not Valeo, that these were necessary steps to change the overall benefit and compensation package to protect the fiscal integrity of the county going forward. We explained that revising the pension benefit by creating a two-tier retirement system wouldn't even affect the current employees, it would only affect new hires. We had a retiree dental proposal, would only affect new hires, wouldn't affect current union members. All of this as part of our effort to demonstrate that our interest here was in developing cautious, conservative fiscal practices going forward. We never received any counterproposal on any of those issues listed on page two with one exception. With regard to the two-tier retirement system, lower pension benefits for people hired hereafter, the union did indeed make a counterproposal. Their counterproposal was we will accept a lower second tier for new hires, but only if the county will agree to reduce benefits of employees the union doesn't even represent, management employees. They wanted to reduce the employer-paid member contribution, they wanted to reduce or eliminate the cafeteria plant, of employees they don't even represent. That was the explicit condition of their willingness to agree to a two-tier retirement plan. That's called conditional bargaining. Conditional bargaining is identified by PRB as an unfair labor practice. You can't condition a proposal on things happening to people you don't even represent. But they put that in writing, and that was the only movement we ever saw on any of these major economic issues. We tried to explain to the union that we needed a revised cost sharing of the health insurance premium for current employees. We pointed out that other county employees, including the deputy sheriffs, paid twenty percent of the premium while the county paid eighty percent of the premium. Because of their prior contract, the union was, had an arrangement where employees only paid ten percent, and the county paid ninety. But we argued strongly that it was necessary to treat the union members the same way we treated other employees, and that the split be eighty-twenty. They rejected that proposal. They rejected all of the proposals you see listed, the dental insurance, the percentage contributions toward retirement, they had this one illegal condition attached to one of the proposals. I asked point-blank at the June twenty-eighth meeting, are you rejecting all of these? And the response we got from the union is, we're just not interested in those proposals. Ironically, the voluntary separation program that you see listed on page two, that was their idea originally, and now they don't even agree to that. At the tenth bargaining session on July twenty-eighth, we gave a last, best, and final proposal. We actually improved that proposal after discussion with the union, and on August eleven, presented the improved last, best, and final. It is what you have before you today. It actually improved a little bit the sick leave cap and a couple of other benefit issues in the direction of the union. When I presented on August eleven, this improved LBFO, I explicitly said, if this is acceptable, we have an agreement. If it is not accepted, we are at impasse. They did not accept. Later that day, we issued the impasse letter and scheduled an impasse meeting with the county exec for August sixteenth. At the August sixteenth meeting, despite the specificity of the notice, the union took the position that this was a negotiating session. In an effort to accommodate the union, the county executive recessed the impasse hearing and allowed the parties to go back to the table to try to negotiate. When the union had no significant movement on any of these major issues, the impasse meeting was resumed, no agreement was reached, there was no request for mediation by either party, the county exec issued a letter on August seventeen saying the impasse was not resolved. We heard nothing for more than two weeks from the union after that August seventeen letter from the county executive. Then, last week, on September first, we received a letter from the union after having advised them of today's agenda item, where they said, we're not at impasse, can't we please keep We have been negotiating for months. We have had, as I said, eleven full bargaining sessions. I mentioned a partial twelfth. That was the interruption in the impasse meeting, where the county executive allowed them one more chance to try to show significant movement, and they did not do so. So that's why we're where we are. Recommendation to the board, we believe that the county needs to take the several steps outlined in your staff report to adjust the benefit structure to protect the county financially going into the future. The economy is going to take quite a while to improve, and when it improves, it will be even longer before counties like Placer will feel any benefit or increased revenue. We fully expect PERS, the state retirement system, to increase its employer contribution rate, mandatory contribution by the employer, substantially in the new, in the near future, given the very substantial losses the PERS investment portfolio has suffered over the last couple of years. The state still does not have a budget, and when it gets one, our sense is it's probably not going to be kind to counties. We're expecting to take a further hit. So our recommendation is that you take the action described on the first page of the staff report, that you adopt the improved last, best, and final offer and the ordinances and resolutions necessary to implement it. Two final points. One, timing. We have considered very seriously whether it's necessary to act today. We believe it is. Next Monday, September thirteenth, is the beginning of the open enrollment period for health insurance for county employees. As you know, one of the issues here is the health insurance premium sharing, the eighty-twenty issue I mentioned. We respectfully submit that has to be resolved now so that employees can make informed choices starting next Monday. And I believe the open enrollment goes to October eighth or October seventh, or, it goes for a few weeks, but it starts next Monday. So for the employees to know what they got, to know what their options are, it is critically important that you act today. You cannot legally adopt that one issue, eighty-twenty health sharing, and not adopt the remaining pieces of the package. It is an all or nothing, as required by the law. Final point, I'd like to give you another perspective in support of the recommendation I have made. It is the perspective of the Sacramento Bee in its editorial yesterday. This was not a guest editorial, or a letter to the editor, this was the editorial from the editorial staff of the Sacramento Bee. The title of the editorial, "Placer Pension Reform: A Strong Step Forward Plan Could Protect County Services." Three brief quotes from that editorial. "Placer County Supervisors Have An Opportunity Tuesday To Strike A Note For More Sane And Sustainable Public Employee Benefits. They Should Grab It." Second quote, "It might be painful now, but over the long run, the proposed changes would make it much more likely that employees have jobs and can avoid more draconian cuts later." And finally, at the end of that editorial, "It will not be an easy vote for supervisors, but it's the right decision." We hope you make the right decision today. I don't have any more comments unless there are questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Whitmore. Questions by board members of Mr. Whitmore? Okay, seeing none. I have a couple questions regarding some of the communications that I've received, and I think it's probably going to be more for Theresa's or CEO's staff. There, persists the perception that year-over-year, the county is twenty-five, thirty million dollars in the black, and that our, our end-of-year fund balance has all kinds of money in it. When we went through our budget hearings a couple weeks ago now, there was a slide that I've asked for, and I don't know if that's available to be loaded, that shows what our operating revenues were and our operating expenditures, and then there's also a slide that speaks to fund balance, where it had historically been used, and where fund balance is being spent now. Do we have that information available? Do we have those slides available?
Yes, Supervisor, you're learning. Greg would be so kind as to load those for us.
Thank you, that's the first one I'm looking for. So who can speak to this?
Teresa Leonard with the Executive Office, and, I'm sorry, my back was to the slide, so I couldn't see what I was looking at. But this essentially talks about countywide revenue and expenditures. And as you will note, as in keeping with some of the comments that have been made by representatives of the negotiating group.
Speak up a little better, get a little closer to the mic or something, maybe it's just me.
Am I on?
Yeah.
There have been some very good years for the county, where our revenues were growing at a pace that exceeded the expenditure growth, and the gap between the blue and the red essentially is the growth over the expenditures. However, you may note that in two thousand seven, eight, that trend line started to shift. And that's about the time when we started noticing significant changes in our economic structure, reductions in sales tax, flattening of the secure property tax role. And this speaks to essentially one of the biggest revenues that the county enjoys, and that's the secure property tax role funding. And for a number of years, yes, we've had some very positive trends in the county where we were bringing in a lot of growth in our secure role. You'll notice, though, over the last two fiscal cycles, that trend, again, has reversed. So what we're projecting out into the future is completely different than what we saw in the last decade. We are no longer going to enjoy revenues in excess of expenditures trending along the same patterns of operations as we are having today. In addition to that, we have the opening of the new South Placer jail that's expected over the next couple of years, and that will compound this issue. So what you see is a rather significant gap between our revenue and expenditures, with the revenue line being the red line, the lower line. The other thing that's happened over the last several fiscal cycles is that in keeping with why we set aside reserves over the last decade, we needed the rainy day funds, and we have started to pull down our general reserves in order to provide for ongoing operations and services to our constituents. As Supervisor, you were mentioned, our fund balance carryover has been significant. What I will tell you is that every dollar of the fund balance carryover has been used every single fiscal year. It is not locked away in a safe somewhere, we are utilizing those funds. In the years with the biggest gap, we use those excess funds to fund several key priorities for the board, capital infrastructure replacement, funding for the other post-employment benefits, which is for dollars for retirees other than pensions, and also to put aside rainy day funds for reserves during that period of time. You'll notice the gap more recently is much smaller. This chart demonstrates the shifting of funds to those priorities, and as the fund balance became lesser, the ability to set these dollars aside for these priorities became limited. And so most recently, in two thousand six, seven, where we were contributing twenty-three million dollars towards capital infrastructure, predominantly from these excess funds, we've only been able to set aside four point five million dollars in this year's budget. Significant, because we have some major capital projects currently under construction, we need at least that much in order to continue forward to meet the deadlines on that.
Teresa, let's, let me stop you there. Teresa, let me stop you there. And I think that it's important, with these numbers in mind, representing that in fiscal years nine, ten, and ten-eleven, both years, we're looking at approximately nine million dollars of that fund balance that we've actually been able to carry over in terms of contributions to capital projects and appropriation for contingencies. So nine million dollars that we're carrying over and rebudgeting for those things. Could you go back one slide, please? That nine million is represented by that delta between the blue and the green line in fiscal year ten-eleven. And what the green line represents is the amount of fund balance, over twenty million dollars in fund balance, that is now being used for annual operations, for ongoing operations.
That is correct.
So this notion that year in and year out, the county is somehow squirreling away thirty million dollars, we're seeing that of the money that gets carried over year to year. Two-thirds of it is automatically budgeted just for operations into the next year, and then of the remaining one-third, half of it goes to capital projects, whereas in the previous, in the earlier years, the better years, we had significant contributions to capital projects: twenty-three, almost twenty-four million dollars in six, seven, nineteen million dollars in seven, eight. So using one-time dollars for one-time expenses, prudently budgeting those dollars, as opposed to what we're seeing today, where more and more of the fund balance is actually not being used for capital expenses and one-time projects, but for ongoing operations. That's where we are today.
That's absolutely where we are today. And what we are projecting is that not only will that trend continue, but we will get to a point where we need more than we have available even to provide for those operations. When you continue to systemically balance a budget and use these one-time dollars that we've been lucky enough to enjoy every year, but that are diminishing each year, towards ongoing operations, you're literally creating what you know is going to be a problem into the future.
Okay. Supervisor Holmes?
Can you go back to the first slide?
First slide?
Very first slide?
Yeah. I think what you just said and what Mr. Whitmore said demonstrates the difference, and we can expect with, we don't know where the state is, there's no sign of a dramatic recovery, that that red line is going to keep going down and down and down.
Well, and that's the next slide, I think. Slide number two, I'm sorry, three? There we go. This shows the ongoing operations cause continuing to escalate well, what you're saying, and that is the revenues continue to drop for at least the next couple of years for a relatively minor growth. And what's important to note is that the cumulative impact of that deficit year over year.
Of note, projections on what will happen with the state have not been factored into these future projections, so quite frankly, this is conservative, and it could be even worse than what we're showing you here, based on what happens with the state.
So your operating revenue projection shown here does not factor in any state hits. This is just what we are seeing based on our assessed valuations for our property tax and sales tax revenues.
It's based on what we know today, and of course, the state does not have a final budget.
Right. Okay. Other questions for Teresa? Supervisor, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So our assessed valuation, I think, is about ten billion dollars down from 2008, 2007.
It's been dropping steadily the last couple of years. For those of you that might be aware, the Assessment Appeals Board has been very, very active over the last couple of years. We've seen significant declines in current property tax values, based on the assessor restructuring the role, in addition to adjustments that are being made through the Assessment Appeals Board. The cumulative impact of this has been significant, and when you drop about 1% of our secure role, it's about a million dollars. So to have these kinds of major reductions in our secure role, it is significant, and it has dropped probably around eight to ten million dollars over the last couple of years.
Okay. Other questions by board members? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. Does that conclude staff's prepared presentation at this point?
Mr. Chairman, that includes Part A. We will have a separate action for your board to consider, which will be Part B.
Understood. Understood. Thank you. Okay. By my clock here, Mr. Whitmore's presentation took approximately fifteen minutes. So whether it's Mr. Thiel, Mr. Galbach, or a combination of the two, I'm going to allow fifteen minutes for you to make your case, and then, of course, the public will have their three minutes each to speak as well. So I don't know how you and Clark want to split it up, but you've got fifteen minutes between the two of you.
Good morning. I'm Chuck Thiel, and I'm the business representative for Station Engineering, Local 39, representing the Placer County employees. And I'm here today to urge you to vote no on imposing the CEO's last best and final offer, and direct the county's representatives to return to the bargaining table and negotiate in good faith instead. The county's representatives prematurely declared impasse and insisted on maintaining that stance in response to the union's proposals and questions regarding executive benefits. The county stated on several occasions that the need to do this was based in part on the public perception of retiree benefits. Yet when Teresa Leonard gave her budget hearing presentation on August 18th, 2010, she purposefully admitted several key facts, thereby misrepresenting the situation to the board. For instance, nowhere did she mention that the county management team has retiree benefits that the rank-and-file don't. In fact, the county spends over 2.1 million dollars on 254 managers for benefits that are not shared with rank-and-file workers. Many of these benefits further spike already bloated executive retirements, yet not a word was spoken of them. For instance, management can cash out up to eighty hours of administrative leave and place that money into an IRA or other retirement investment vehicle. Management has a $2,100 cafeteria plan that can be invested into the county's deferred compensation program. In addition, Placer County provides managers up to $750 in matching deferred compensation contributions annually. But lastly, Placer County's contract with CalPERS grants managers a 7% retirement spike in their last year of employment. These are benefits for management employees only, and while it is true that public pensions are under scrutiny, it is the triple-figure executive pensions that are drawing the public's ire. In contrast, the average Placer County retiree leaves less than $15,000 in annual pension payments, which to live on. And this will be reduced by about $2,000 if this proposal is imposed. The reduction is the same whether the retiree's making $10,000 a year or $150,000 a year as a retired manager. We have asked repeatedly, why should we agree to a proposal that takes food away from the elderly, when management continues to reap pensions and benefits above what the public can stomach? We have never received an answer. The only answer we were given is that we must be at impasse. To add insult to injury, the county's last best and final offer also removes the 10% cap on the number of managers that the county can hire. That's why we pulled the voluntary separation program, because that was contingent, our agreement to the voluntary separation program would have been contingent on our acceptance of removing the 10% management cap. Currently, the current ratio between rank-and-file and management is that we have eight and a half rank-and-file employees to every manager. Yet studies on management span of control will tell you that the efficiency drops when the ratio of managers to employees is greater than one to fourteen. Yet the county's answer to having too many managers is to remove the cap. That means more managers receiving more of the same bloated benefits package. This sounds nonsensical, but is the proposal that the CEO is asking you to impose this morning. This impasse was declared to stop the discussion of bloated management retirement pay. It isn't going to work. We don't represent the people in the $100,000 PERS club. The people we represent pave our roads, lock up criminals, help disabled and abused children, protect the public against communicable disease, and provide many other vital services to our community. Meanwhile, managers create policy, and some, as evidenced during the budget workshops, misrepresent the true state of affairs. For the CEO to say that Local 39 did not offer any economic proposals is just untrue. To say that it was apparent that an agreement would not be reached is to justify the CEO's bad-faith rush to implementation. To say that the parties discussed utilization of the impasse procedures and non-binding mediation is also untrue. No discussion of the sort took place. The county and Local 39 have used mediation in the past and reached an agreement as a result. To say we won't this time can only be based on the CEO's desire to protect bloated management perks by offering up the benefits of the rank-and-file and robbing Placer County's retired senior citizens. The county is asking that rank-and-file workers take a cut in their net pay in order to help the county. They did that last year with twelve furlough days, and the county ended the year with a $45 million surplus from the general fund as a result. In closing, we implore you to rethink staff's recommendation to impose this offer and to order them back to the bargaining table instead. To do otherwise would be unjust and cause unnecessary harm to employees and retirees.
Thank you, Mr. Thiel. That was five minutes. Mr. Galbach?
Thank you. Because of the time constraints, we're going to go a little bit out of order. Lady and gentlemen of the board, I'm here today as president of the PPO to say a few words about the status of negotiations between Placer County and PPO, and to urge you to have your representatives return to the negotiating table and bargain in good faith. Before I begin, I think it's important for the board to note that I'm not just the president of your biggest local labor union, I'm also the president of Auburn Union Elementary School District, though not here in that capacity. I'm also on the board of governors of the State Bar of California, which is responsible for the 220,000 attorneys in the state of California, but I'm also not here in that capacity today. I say that because I'm on the board of directors on two different groups, and I'm on the union on one different group. I'm fully aware of the issues facing both sides of the aisle in these matters. On a historical note, PPO was chartered in 1950, sixty years ago. For fifty-six of those years, PPO negotiated with Placer County and reached a mutually beneficial agreement. The first time in PPO's history that it was with Placer County that it went to impasse was in 2006, when Tom Miller was the new CEO. In 2007, Placer County, led by Tom Miller, was able to reach an agreement with DSA, leading to a three-year impasse and eventually imposition of terms upon them. In 2010, Placer County, under Tom Miller, is unable to reach an agreement with PPO again. Through fifty-six years, we have shared the pain of bad times and worked to help make Placer County an ideal place to live. But in 2006, in what Teresa Leonard now calls the booming economy of 2000 to 2007, according to the April, excuse me, August 18th, August 20th presentation to the board, PPO and later DSA were forced to share benefit reductions in hiring freezes, while the county's surplus, overall total budget surplus, hit $111 million. Of course, at this time, Mr. Miller reported to the Auburn Journal in 2005, 2006, 2007, 2008, 2009, 2010, that economic times were terrible, not booming. The only difference between 2006 and 2010, from the prior fifty-six years, is the board's, is the board supervisor's support staff and CEO's office, led by the current CEO, advising the board. This board makes decisions, especially budget decisions, based upon financial projections of the CEO's office. In 2006, general fund expenses were $42 million less than projected, or 15.6% of the entire budget. In 2007, expense projections were high by 42.8 million, or 15.5%. In 2008, expense projections were high by 39.4 million. 2009, they're high by 31.3 million. When a representative of the CEO's office comes before you and with a straight face says that we have a budget deficit of $23.6 million based upon projections to the expenses and revenues, I really honestly don't know how the board cannot look at that person and shake their head in disbelief. How many times can a department under control of this CEO be massively wrong every time and still hold credibility? This board also relies on the CEO's office to negotiate with your labor unions and your management. As previously stated, under this CEO, Placer County has gone to impasse for the first time in fifty-six years, and for the second time in sixty years. The CEO has reached zero agreements in Placer County with any union without impasse. He has presided over the greatest decline in employee morale in this county's history. I have worked in Placer County for fourteen years. Some of my coworkers have worked here quite a bit longer than that. And until recently, I've never seen the overwhelming majority of employees consider the county's leadership with such distrust and disdain. From elected department heads to managers to line workers, Mr. Miller is almost universally disliked. With respect to the merits of the last best and final offer, I have a few quick points to make. Other than comments which will come after me, I will speak to the numbers, as is usually my specialty. Initially, memo to the board supervisors on February 23rd, 2010, your CEO's office indicated that the general fund deficit for 2010, 2011 would be $23.6 million. In order to close this deficit, there needed to be $6.3 million in labor adjustments, five million from PPO and 1.3 million from management confidential. I'm going to digress slightly to say that you, the board, have really abused your management team. Not that they have any recourse, but you told them that you needed 1.3 million dollars to balance the budget. However, your own materials for this meeting, under the materials from Agenda Item 2B on Page 41, shows that the previous twelve days of MTO for management saved 1.84 million dollars, or $153,000 per day of MTO. Their coerced agreement this year to nine days of MTO and eighty-twenty healthcare split will save 1.38 million dollars from the nine MTO days alone. The eighty-twenty healthcare split was not necessary at all, and it, including it, far exceeds the 1.3 million dollars you allegedly needed. And then, after coercing this agreement out of your management team, you later threw in the merit pay freeze, taking $143,000 out of the pockets of your thirty-seven newest managers. And now you're going to vote to up the ante, reducing their healthcare 401K and new pay, increasing dental rates, eliminating retiree dental for new managers hired next year, and eliminating sick leave cash out. For an average new manager, this will be a total of 10.7% of their pay if they're on family healthcare insurance. And I know, in the future, you're going to be capping your sick leave and raising the contribution to retirement, just as you're planning to do to us today. Adding in just two of those many benefits that you're voting to increase today, take away from them today, adds up to a total of 1.85 million dollars for management to fill the 1.3 million dollar hole. So after taking far more than the county said it needed from management, we give back to the humble PPO employees and retirees. You said you needed 5 million dollars. The eighty-twenty healthcare reduction alone is more than what the county has stated it needs. Moving employees to eighty-twenty will also move retirees to eighty-twenty. Calculations presented to this board by Teresa Leonard on August 18th, 2010, on Slide 22, shows the elimination of a stipend for retirees who retired before January 1, 2007. Moving all retirees to eighty-twenty will shift 1.82 million dollars from the pockets of retirees to the county. The average pension for retirees in the county in 2006 was $10,800 a year. The average now is $14,737, not quite what you'd anticipate when reading the newspapers about the 100,000-plus retirements of only managers. In reality, you're taking money from those least able to afford it and who have no voice to try to bargain with you. The eighty-twenty will also transfer 2.7 million dollars from the active employees to the county coffers, but that's not the full effect. As indicated in the 818 presentation on Slides 27 and 28, a reduction in the county's contribution to healthcare to eighty-twenty results in a $21 million reduction to OPEB, and that results in a $3 million per year reduction to the ARC payment. And then there's 1.25 million dollars from the increased retirement payments. And don't forget the 2.8 million dollars for the five days of furlough that you're already imposing on us this fiscal year. The eighty-twenty also takes approximately 2.7 million from the active employees. So when you add up the current LBFO, not stating a few of the other items, it adds up to a tidy 11.9 million dollars to fill a 5 million dollar hole. I haven't even added in the two-tiered retirement, which won't actually save any money for years or decades, and the sick leave cap, which is more of a finger in the eye to long-term faithful employees than it is a real money saver. With respect to negotiations, a quick point needs to be made. Negotiations are supposed to be a dialogue intended to resolve disputes or to produce an agreement. The PPO's negotiating team has decades of experience in negotiating. It's what I do for a living, it's what I've done for fourteen years. Mr. Opich on our team has done it for twenty-plus years. The representatives from Local 39 have been doing it for over twenty years. We know negotiation. We know give and take. We know a dialogue. What we've received in these alleged negotiations is a monologue from the representative of this board. "We are perfectly willing to come to the table and have an actual negotiation, a dialogue, in an attempt to come to an agreement. We have not been fortunate so far in this respect. We would appreciate the opportunity to bargain in good faith," with an emphasis on good faith.
I'm sorry, is this another representative of the organization? Okay. Okay. We're down to about three minutes.
I think I can do it, once I get up here. Good morning, Chairman Yuler and board of supervisors. My name is Glenn Harnish. I've been a Placer County Child Support Attorney for nine years. I'm vice president of the PPO. I took four hours of vacation time today to speak with you. I ask you today to not impose a contract, but instead, ask your negotiating team to come back to the table and bargain for a new contract that does not contain serious flaws and oversights. Certain shortcomings in the imposed contract will be awful for both employees and the county. My recent experience makes this even more apparent. Four months ago, I took a hard fall while doing some weekend volunteer work at my son's school. I shattered my heel. After five hours of reconstructive foot surgery... After five hours of reconstructive foot surgery, three days in the hospital, and 60 days lying on my back so the incision would close, I was finally able to get back to work, even though I could not put any pressure on the broken heel for another 30 days. My wife drove me to work, my coworkers helped me as needed. Fortunately, in my previous nine years, I'd accumulated hundreds of hours of sick time. I used hundreds of those for this accident. And because of this, I did not lose my home, my son can still go to college, and I'm much greater peace of mind, for which I am grateful, to Placer County. I recall that five years ago, some friends openly ridiculed me for staying with the county. They were making many times my income selling real estate and mortgages. I defended my 2.5 percent COLAs by saying I was looking at the long term, the safety of benefits like sick time, retirement benefits, health insurance were very important to me and my family. That is why, after my recent experiences, particularly appalling to me that the county wishes to cap sick leave. Why target the long-term employees, particularly those who have sacrificed to be sure the county's services have continued at a high level despite minor illness and aches and pains? We have worked in good faith. Why shrink the safety net now? Is the short-term political gain worth it to slam the most loyal county employees? I ask you to reconsider that more work is needed before an even-handed contract is completed. Imposing now is not in the best interest of the employees of the county. Saving money is one thing, but surely it can be done without being unfair. Placer County will always need experienced, loyal, capable employees, employees whose ambition is not to get rich, but to provide a stable future for their families. I hope you will agree the long-term benefits to the county require that you take another stab at the contract rather than imposing the seriously flawed contract which is before you now. I, I, I'm a little surprised that someone had the nerve to quote the Sacramento Bee here. I thought I'd be hooted out if I did. But I will note that in that editorial, at the top of the right column, it says, "It is always better to negotiate rather than impose a contract." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Any Board members have any questions of any of the representatives of either 39 or the PPEO before we open it up to public hearing? Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I, I have one question, and I'm not sure who I should address it to, but we've been told today that PPEO is, is unwilling to go to mediation. Can anyone actually speak to that and tell us if that is indeed the case, or if you would be willing to get mediation?
And just to clarify, I believe what I heard Mr. Whitmore say wasn't that they weren't willing to, it was that nobody asked for it. That was what I thought I heard Mr. Whitmore say, was neither side requested mediation at that meeting back on August 11th, but...
Jennifer, it was our hope that we could negotiate a contract without an intermediary. However, we are willing to meet with the mediator. We've used mediators in the past, and we've come out with agreements in the past that we've actually taken out to a vote and have had those contracts ratified. So, given the successful history of mediation, we would continue in that in order to reach an agreement.
So, yes, yes, you would be willing to go to mediation if we were to go back to contract negotiation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jake, you can just stay right there and press the button right there, and you can just use that microphone right there. You don't have to...
The point I was trying to make with regard to mediation was, we had an impasse meeting. It was on August 16th. The purpose of the impasse meeting is to decide whether or not you're going to go to mediation, whether you're going to use some other methodology. There was no request to go to mediation. From the county's perspective, mediation, we think, is not going to be productive because there are so many issues where the parties are so far apart. Mediation is successful, and I agree with Chuck that it's been successful in the past, where you're down to one or two issues and you're fairly close, and the mediator can come up with creative solutions to bridge the gap. Here, we have major differences that on numerous issues. I just don't think, from a county perspective, mediation makes any sense. There was no request for it at the impasse meeting. I don't think it would be appropriate to delay this process by going through what I am sad to say I think would be a futile mediation process.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Whitmore, I do speak for at least some of the county in my position here, and I don't think it's futile. Mediation is designed to bring people at opposite poles of a position together, and I, I would hope that the county and PPEO would both be willing to go to mediation.
One, one real quick point, too, regarding the timing of this. Mr. Whitmore had said during his statement that it was, that time was of the essence because open enrollment is coming, and CalPERS will allow an employer to hold an open enrollment if there's a contract negotiated and agreed to that changes, that has a significant change to health benefits. So, we can, you know, we can have another open enrollment or postpone the open enrollment, and PERS will allow that. They've done that in other jurisdictions. So, to rush to it just for the open enrollment is not true. Thank you.
I, I believe I heard you just say, "PERS will allow it if there's a contract negotiated and agreed to..."
If there's major changes in the health plan, correct.
Okay. What about a contract that is imposed after the open enrollment deadline? Do they allow...
Most employers don't impose contracts on employees.
I understand that. I'm asking the question. You specifically qualified by saying, "If there's a contract negotiated and agreed to, then they will allow for a later open enrollment." Are you saying that should we go to mediation, be unable to negotiate and agree to a contract, and then the Board imposes that CalPERS will allow for open enrollment at that point?
With a substantial, my understanding is with a substantial change to health benefits or the health plan, cost-sharing plan, that they'll allow an open enrollment. So, I would imagine that would hold true if the Board chose to impose at a later date.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Thiel or any of the PPEO representatives before we open it up to the public? Supervisor Montgomery, you have another question?
Yeah, I do. I just, I've been getting dozens and dozens of emails and phone calls and personal contacts over the weekend, which is probably why I look so haggard today. But one of the issues that has been raised by a number of the folks who have contacted me is they feel that PPEO has not really reached out enough to the rank and file to hear what their position is. I've heard it from a number of folks, and I don't want to dismiss it because it seems that one of the, one of the differences between this and the next agenda item is that the next agenda item involved a pretty substantial outreach to the individuals affected, whereas the negotiation that we've had so far has been between the county representatives and the PPEO representatives. Is there any, any possibility of the union doing some sort of straw polling, some sort of outreach on what has been proposed by the county, just to see where their rank and file membership sits on those proposals?
Are you asking that of Mr. Gelbach or Mr. Thiel?
Whoever would like to answer that.
I think either of them would be better able to answer that than I.
Actually, we've been receiving a lot of emails and responding to them. We've been holding a lot of worksite meetings, and the, the overwhelming reaction to the last best and final offer, you know, considering, you know, everything else, the county's financial situation, the management perks and so forth, is that they're behind us. And so, you know, we have been doing that, we're doing more, we're holding a series of other meetings. PPEO has established a website. We've taken a lot of input from the membership, and, and they're supporting us. And they'll support it if the Board imposes today, they'll support us in our activities later, too. So, you know, if somebody didn't get the email, I don't know what to say, but we've got a great email tree. You know, we've, we've been communicating as well in the Local 39 newspaper newsletter. So, you know, I can't imagine somebody missing out, but if they have, they should contact us. I mean, we're, that's what we're here for. We answer every question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other Board members have any comments or questions? Hold one second, sir. We'll, we'll get to the public. Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I just can't help myself. I need to say something. And I understand my part of the role here as being a lightning rod, so no matter how the lightning comes, I can appreciate the intensity of the comments more for the emotion and the reality of those. But there are two points that I do need to clarify for the record here, because there is some facts in this and outside some of the rhetoric, is that the 2006, it made it sound like that was an imposed contract on PPO, and me, the devil, led the charge on that. Actually, we did reach, I think, an impasse in 2006, and what we asked the governing Board of PPO to do at that time, the negotiating team, said, "Take it out to a vote." That's what we said, "Take it out to a vote." That was voted 90 percent for, 10 against. 90 percent for, 10 against. That was not an imposed contract by the Board. The other statement, it came from Mr. Gelbach, is, "County imposed five days MTO this year." No, we did not. We agreed and we negotiated those five MTO days. There could have been higher than that. The PPO chose not to go higher than that, so we stopped at the five MTO days. So, just need to clarify that for the record, but most importantly, back to that 2006 date.
Thank you. Before I open up the public, just an observation that in the interest of fairness, I tried to make it a point to allow Local 39, PPEO, the combined representation, an equal amount of time to Mr. Whitmore in his presentation where Mr. Whitmore was representing the county's position. By my clock of the 15 minutes that was used by the PPEO and union representation, 11 of those 15 minutes were not used advancing the arguments on behalf of the employees, but rather attacking management in general and Mr. Miller in particular. And so, I don't know that that's the best use of our time, and if that's indicative of the attitude that has been expressed in the 11, almost 12 negotiating sessions, then perhaps it's the reason why we're sitting here today. But interesting use of your time. At that point, we'll go ahead and open it to the public. Any members of the public wish to address the Board on this item, please come forward. You will have three minutes. Each, each speaker will have three minutes.
Mr. Euler, in all honesty, I'm also here on behalf of the bargaining team for the PPEO. My understanding was there's still about three minutes left.
No, actually, that was the total of the 15 minutes was used between the three previous speakers, but you do have your three minutes of the public.
Okay, thank you. As a member of the PPO bargaining team, myself and my colleagues conducted our negotiations in good faith. As I speak on behalf of PPO members, both current and retired...
Your name, your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Aaron Johnson.
Thank you.
Okay. As I speak on behalf of PPO members, both current and retired, I ask you to look at your negotiating team and determine if their bargaining tactics or lack thereof were in good faith. To set upon a course in which the only intention was to impose a course of actions against the employees of this county is indeed not in good faith. The employees of this county, your employees, took concessions totaling in the thousands of dollars per member, resulting in millions of dollars of cost savings for this county over the last year and a half by means of 19 furlough days. The ethical practice on your behalf would have been to reasonably invest or save this money for the future need of the county. Instead, there is still lavish spending, including acquisition of land and properties not immediately needed. Services for the citizens of this county have been cut. It is appalling that while citizens of this county see services diminish, conversely, spending seems to be as usual. Our employees and the citizens of this county deserve more, and they deserve answers as to the decisions that are being made. The average employee cannot afford drastic measures that your negotiating team is asking for you to vote on today. My personal change in circumstances, if this action is to be imposed, would be a loss of nearly $250 per month, and that's on top of the $4,000-plus dollars that I've given back by means of furlough days over the last year and a half. And let's not forget that those that have served their time in the public sector that have retired, the retirees that are going to see a cut in their check when it comes home because of the fact that it needs to now go towards more medical spending, and as Mr. Gelbach said earlier, the average employee that is currently retired from Placer County is only making a bit over $10,000 per year, and they're going to see a sizable chunk of that diminish. These individuals, their livelihood will be adversely affected should they need to find more money from a retirement income that they have set. We have a, we have a duty to protect each other, to support each other, and to be fair to one another. The members of PPEO, your employees, understand a need to look into the future, to be more prepared for the ebbs and flows of the economy, and to provide the needed services to our citizens. I ask you this: Why must so many concessions be made on one contract, all at one time, with little negotiating and a seemingly lack of good faith? I appeal to your duty to do what is just. Tell your negotiating team to get back to the table, do their, do their duty, and negotiate in good faith. We are willing to negotiate with this team, but there needs to be give and take. We cannot come to the table, meeting after meeting, and be told that our issues are not important, that our issues will not be addressed, and that you're going to take it or leave it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Brody, living in La Vista.
Good morning.
And I want to represent the retired portion of the audience here, who are kind of bound by what happens with the PPO contract. And I just would like to request that you consider some means to reimburse the lowest-paid pensioners, most of which, most of whom are very old, some have been 20 years on, on your rolls and probably don't have much more time to, to be. But anyway, if there is some, some means to reimburse that portion of, of your constituency that would suffer the most under the 20-80 formula, because 20 percent of medical insurance can be a lot more for them, a lot more portion of their budget. So, think of their budget when you think of your budget.
Thank you.
My name is Gloria Stallman. Did you write that down?
Writing it down right now.
I'm here today to speak on behalf of the retirees who retired prior to January 1st, We're not on the $100,000-a-year list for pensions. I have the lowest healthcare plan that CalPERS has, Kaiser Medicare program. If you take 20 percent of that premium out of my pension, that's almost 8 percent of my pension. I pay $96 and change a month for, for Medicare. So, we're not getting off free. But those of us who retired before January 1st, 2007, are going to be negatively impacted by taking this 20 percent out of our pensions. We're not, we don't have a lot of money, I'll put it that way. We're doing the best we can, and there's no need for you to take part of our pension for the healthcare because our numbers, believe it or not, are diminishing. Since the 1st of this year, I've been to more than one funeral and memorial service, and they've been Placer County retirees who retired before January 1st, 2007. So, I'd like you to rethink that 20 percent for the retirees and find the money someplace else. I know Placer County is not in dire financial straits because there's been money from the county going to other places. Maybe you could change that. So, I hope you'll give this some serious thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Roe Bailey, and I'm one of those pre-'07 retirees. I'm one of the rich ones. I went out with a safety retirement, so I'm making more than the $14,000 general average that the others are. But what is... But what is happening and what doesn't seem to be considered, you left us alone before, you listened to us with the 10 percent before, and we have been reimbursed, the 10 percent purse is taken out by the county. I'm asking that you do this for us again. There's only 934 of us, plus or minus. We're not a big chunk of what's causing problems. I agree, the economy has gone south. And it's impacting me and anybody that owns property. My home, which in '08 had a value, that now I am being told its value is less than half of what it was in '08. That was my nest egg, and that's what I planned if there was a major, major emergency, that I would be able to take all that equity that I'd worked so hard for and been able to do it. The 401K that I got through Placer County, it's half of what it was two years ago also, without me touching it. So, I'm being impacted just like Placer County's being impacted, and I'm losing money right and left. When I was an employee, I gave up COLAs and other benefits to negotiate my medical, my health benefit. I went out with a broken back. It was job-related, and I turned down workers' comp on a lifetime back and neck medical because I had Placer County to take care of me. What can I say? I would wish that the board would consider zinning alone, especially the pre-'07 retirees. I can't speak for the others, but I can speak for what this is going to do to me, and it's going to be a major impact. So, thanks for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Roe. Who else? Just step right up.
My name is Darrell Hendricks. I've been a Placer County employee for 15 years, and I find it appalling that the county executive officers and the Board of Supervisors have retreated from the bargaining table. The hard-working and dedicated rank-and-file employees that keep this county running smoothly are on the financial brink. You must be clueless and heartless to ask us to give up another $250 to $500 more taken out of our paychecks each month, on top of what already has been sacrificed through furlough days, a higher cost of living rate that includes higher food, living, and fuel expenses than ever before. This would ensure the nail in the coffin for our financial future. Most of your employees don't make anything close to the $100,000 per year that purported by our local newspapers. Most of us live paycheck to paycheck. Morale among the workforce is at an all-time low. We've cut our department budgets to the bone. We've streamlined to the point one person doing the work of two to three people. We've done our part, and we've stayed loyal to the community we serve through all of We, as your employees, all work for the same goal, to serve the constituents of Placer County well and true. Do not let your desire to put the bottom line ahead of your people while in office. Do not be short-sighted in your duties. Do the right thing and come back to the bargaining table. Your employees aren't asking for a Rose Garden. We're asking for a reasonable contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Rick Elpisch. I live in Rockland. I've been a resident here in Placer County for all except maybe two years of the 58 years I've been privileged to live here in California. 55 years, pardon me. The strength of an organization is not found in its budget, its management, or its function. The strength of an organization is found in its people, the men and women who come to work day after day, year after year, and willingly carry out their duties to the organization and to the people the organization serves. The relationship between an organization and its employees is a complex blend of neutral obligations, agreements, and continuing practices. While the obligations, agreements, and practices are not cast in stone, they should only be changed with the consent of the parties. The organization that imposes a unilateral change of a long-settled practice should not do so without expecting to bear the costs of the ill-feeling and resentment generated among those employees. The decision to cap sick leave, to impose this cap in a manner that prevents employees from accruing any more sick leave until they fall below the arbitrary ceiling your county executive has chosen, strikes long-service employees, employees who have demonstrated year after year their dedication to their jobs and to the people of Placer County. It takes decades of steady, reliable service to accumulate even six months of sick leave. Now, you would compel such an employee to use over two and a half months of sick leave before he or she could ever again accrue sick leave, a right he or she has had longer than any of you have sat on this board, and parenthetically, a right I've had since the longest member of you was a sophomore in high school. If you were to talk to your first-line managers directly, they would tell you the drawbacks of this new system. They anticipate more frequent use of sick leave, especially as employees approach the arbitrary 600-hour cutoff. This will make it more difficult to ensure that all necessary positions are filled each day. In some agencies, this will result in an increase in overtime pay in order to fill positions that must be covered. Have no doubt, your situation today is unprecedented. If you decide to follow the recommendation of your county executive and impose a contract, it will be the first time in the history of this county that all of the represented employees will work under contracts to which they have not agreed. None of us knows the consequences of such a decision. It will be like kicking open the door of a dark house, not knowing what awaits you inside. But you should be aware that you are stocking a reservoir of suspicion, ill-feeling, and resentment between this board, its management, and the men and women you rely on to provide the people of Placer County with the services they need. This reservoir will not be drained until long after your terms of office expire, however short or long they may be. If you wish that to be your legacy, impose this contract.
Go ahead, finish your thought.
Impose this contract, the fruit of refusal to negotiate in good faith. If you want something better for the people you have sworn to serve, send us back to the negotiating table, demand that your negotiating team bargain in good faith, and let us come to a mutual agreement that is worthy of the people of Placer County and the county employees
Good morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Vicki Ramsey. I am a career 20-year employee of Placer County and have deep roots in the community. I was raised in Placer County, still live here, and value the well-being of the people of the county, the county's employees, and the services provided by the county. Please seriously consider my comments on the proposed PPO contract that you're considering imposing today, the terms of which are unnecessarily harsh to employees. The combined impacts of the items as proposed in the county's LBO exceed the need to the county to maintain fiscal security. If savings are needed, short-term savings should be the focus with future adjustments as necessary. After all, this is not a long, multi-year contract. Alternatives are available to generate budget savings that the county may actually need now. For example, PPO has proposed an additional four MTO days beyond the five already scheduled to achieve budget savings. This was not seriously considered by the county. As proposed, the 600-hour sick leave cap would penalize your most dedicated and reliable employees. Over many years, I have saved almost 1,000 hours of sick leave. I have done so through the graces of good luck and good health and as part of a prudent plan to protect myself and my family in the event of a serious illness or injury. Accidents happen. Serious illnesses happen. Both occur through no fault of the victim. When I was young, my parents were hit head-on by a drunk driver going the wrong way without headlights on Interstate 80. They barely survived. I learned many things from that event. Consequently, I have judiciously guarded my sick leave. I may need it at any time. When others might call in sick with minor aches and pains, I do not. I am at work doing my job. If I get sick or hurt, I want to be able to pay my mortgage, my bills, recuperate with the aid of good healthcare, and return to work. The CEO of staff report to you lists a proposed 600-hour sick leave cap under prospective county saving provisions. As of June 18th of this year, less than 15 percent of PPO-represented employees have 500 or more hours of accrued sick leave. Less than that would have more than 600 hours, the proposed cap limit. Not all employees who leave county employment retire from the county. Only employees who retire from Placer County can convert their unused sick leave to any benefit. Therefore, prospective cost savings to the county from imposing a 600-hour sick leave cap does not affect a large enough percentage of employees to amount to a significant savings to the county. However, removing unlimited sick leave accrual could be devastating to an employee and his or her family. As an existing county employee, I should be able to continue to accrue sick leave at the current rate each year. I should not be penalized for saving sick leave. Please seriously consider my comments. Do not impose this LBO. There are alternatives. As suggested by Supervisor Montgomery, please give your employees the opportunity for the county and PPO to go to mediation. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public? I'd like to speak. Please step forward, state your name.
My name is Selby Abramson. I don't feel that the county's proposal to double the employee's share of medical premiums and PERS contribution is right. I feel there is no reason to do this. From what I understand, for the last several years, each and every year, the county has had millions of dollars in surplus left over after each fiscal year. I also don't feel the county's proposal to cap sick leave accrual is right. Many of us have worked for the county for several years, and because we have been diligent about coming to work, have accumulated sick hours over the proposed cap. If this proposal were implemented, these employees would not accumulate any more sick hours until they fell below the cap, which may never happen. Those employees who are under the cap would continue to accrue sick hours. Those employees who are below the cap would see benefit from those sick hours, whereas those employees who are over the cap would not. I feel this is not right and unfair. If the county is going to impose a cap on sick hours, I feel that the county needs to compensate those who are above the cap in some way. One way this could be accomplished is by cashing out hours for those who are above the cap. So, I must ask, why is the county doing this? I respectfully request that the county return to the bargaining table and negotiate in good faith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Name is Bill Kaps. I think all of you are here back, because I was in openness. One year in the Placer County grand jury, three or four terms on the Placer County Parks Commission. Understand how that works. My wife is retired from Placer County, and we were able to take advantage of the sick leave. The biggest two concerns I have is that this agenda came out Friday on a county holiday. It was put over the week for a four-day weekend. I think the general public, which I am, has had very little experience. It was not covered in the Auburn Journal very well, but Sacramento Bee did a good job. I think the proposal of postponing your decision today or requesting mediation is a very good one. I have to understand the frustration of a six-month negotiation. I come from the private sector. You don't even start talking about real things for two years. I've had retro checks that were four and five years old. So, I don't think you've even gotten close to the real negotiation part of a new contract in the timeframe that you're talking about. I recommend, and I request, that you think about requesting mediation and taking and delaying any action until a later date. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, please. Just by show of hands, how many more folks are interested in speaking to this item? I see one, two, two people. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Carolyn Springer. I am here today to ask the Board of Supervisors to give management direction to work with Local 39 for continued negotiations. I live, work, and play in Placer County. My paycheck supports the prosperity of Placer County. The changes Placer County has proposed to date for the new contract will lessen the quality of life for the Placer County employees. Every one of us has seen the empty buildings, car dealerships, and homes for sale or in foreclosure in our county. As you diminish my spending power, you are also diminishing the earning power of your local grocer, farmer, doctor, auto mechanic, retail merchant, and contractor. When they can no longer keep their doors open, the businesses close. The county loses revenue. And the proprietors either leave the area or are forced to ask the county for assistance, further draining county resources. The buying power of Placer County employees is helping to keep this community alive. When you decrease my spending ability, you are hurting the community. It is a matter of viability for the cities, counties, and the state. I am a county employee, and I am only one person, but multiply that by 1,900 employees, and you can visualize how many people, how many Placer County businesses are affected. Government is not a for-profit agency. Do you want to keep the economy moving, or do you want to add to our unemployment and increase the service assistance programs of Placer County? Remember, you are affecting me, and I'm affecting Placer County. I haven't given up. Have you? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Miss Ma'am.
Hello. My name is Jennifer Tisdale. I'm one of the shop stewards for the Sunset Human Services as well as Veteran Services Office. I wanted to speak a little bit about how this has directly impacted some of the support staff at our office, particularly with the furloughs that have already been imposed. Several of my coworkers have had difficulty covering their essential living expenses, such as their utilities, car insurance, groceries. Some have even had to file bankruptcy with already, with the cuts that they've already negotiated to agree to. Much of the clerical staff has a starting wage barely above minimum wage to begin with. To double the cost of their healthcare contributions would mean that employees would have to make a tough decision of possibly dropping their family coverage for, you know, the coverage for their families due to the additional cost of this. That, again, would cause an increase in our welfare rolls because these employees would probably then turn to the state to apply for healthy families programs, to have coverage for their children. This is a very real thing that's happening right now already with the cuts that are already here, and then to impose additional cuts to your support staff would cause an undue hardship. I also want to speak to the concern that was brought up earlier about its members not feeling like the union is listening to them. Prior to negotiations, the union actively requested the opinion and ideas from its members and conducted pre-contract meetings. The shop stewards such as myself are always available to answer any questions of its members and try to keep them as updated as we possibly can. I also want to point out that last best and final offer, the impasse was imposed, or the impasse was declared only three hours after the last best and final offer before the union could even go to its members to discuss it. Since the last best and final offer was announced, the union has had a number of contract negotiation update meetings for the members throughout the county. I respectfully request that, at this time, the board reject the proposal to impose this contract and send it back to negotiations. Thank you.
Sir, in the back. And was there anybody else? I had only seen those two hands. Another gentleman in the back? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jim Tigret. I am a member of the PPO Board of Directors. I was a member of the negotiating team. Obviously, I'm an employee of Placer County. I'm a citizen. I'm a taxpayer, and I live in District 4, Mr. Euler. So, good morning to you again.
Thank you.
They were afraid I was going to come up here and say something wrong, so I'm trying to kind of be careful. There it comes, Jim.
It's your three minutes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm going to go over, too. No, I'm probably not. Anyway, we talked about good-faith bargaining. The initial offer from the county, and I want the retirees to hear this, was one and a half at age 65. a half at age 65. That's good faith, okay? That's what they first laid on us. We have about 250 employees in vacant positions, if I'm not mistaken, so we're saving some money there. At one time during that period, we had, what, three assistant CEOs and one CEO? So maybe we are a little top-heavy. You have surplus to purchase and rehab facilities, but nothing to give the employees. At a board meeting back in June, I think it was you, Mr. Euler, that mentioned Mr. Wigan's going to retire here pretty soon. Congratulations, sir.
Actually, we're stuck with him for four more years.
Okay.
He was just re-elected.
Were you? You're not in my district, sir.
Ran unopposed and...
In any event, you had mentioned that if he, or you used Mr. Wigan as an example.
Yeah.
And you said, if he retires, he doesn't have a pension. But then again, we don't rub elbows with the same people you guys do. So, you know, my suggestion is, you know, I mean, that's your choice if you want to be on the Board of Supervisors. So, you know, my suggestion is, if, you know, the rest of us are taking a hit, can you guys take a 5% hit, too? Now, I emailed one of your board members at that time, and they said, "Well, you know, my spouse is getting kind of tired of me working 60 to 75 hours a week for the salary that I'm getting." Again, that's your choice. The employees of Placer County don't seem to have any choices in this process. Back in February, you were presented with a report from the CEO staff about managers taking an 80-20, nine MTOs, and an increase in their purse. And in that report, the report said that 60% of the managers responded to the survey to take these hits. And in that report, it said that was an excellent response. And someone, please tell me how six out of 10 is excellent? When you take a 10-question test, it becomes a D? So six out of 10 is not excellent. Nine out of 10 is excellent. When I spoke to one of those managers, they said they got so fed up with those meetings that they stopped going. Can I go on?
Finish your thought, please.
Since I'm entertaining you.
You just finish your thought, wrap it up. That'd be great.
Mr. Whitmore said that he speculates on the economy. He said the economy's going to get bad. I thought Mr. Whitmore was a negotiator and not an economist. He also mentioned the Sacramento Bee article. The Sacramento Bee editorial staff always introduce things to the community. They also introduce who should be elected and who shouldn't, and many times, the Bee is wrong. In 2006, Tom, we did mediate, at least, to get that contract, and that's why 90% of the members voted for the contract. But we did mediate, at least. The other thing is, you know, it took you three years to impose on DSA, and it took you three hours to impose on us. Something's not right. So I think there's some hypocrisies in some of this, and I think there's some comments that have been misconstrued, and there's been some rhetoric thrown around that really doesn't necessarily need to be. I'm disappointed, and Mr. Whitmore especially, especially in negotiating. There were times when we were at the table and we were looking at the paperwork that was presented, and he would step back several times and say, "Well, I don't know what that means. Somebody, please tell me." Which, to me, seems like he was ill-prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold one second, sir. The gentleman in the back, you raised your hand? Yes, please. Come on up. And then this gentleman just raised his hand. Is there anybody else after that that would like to be heard? Okay, we'll try to wrap it up with these two gentlemen. Yes, sir?
Thank you for hearing me, and I'm sorry we're red, but I didn't plan on speaking here, but...
I'm sorry. For the record, your name, sir?
Randy Cancleaney.
Okay.
I hadn't planned on speaking here, but I listened to everything everybody had to say, and everybody's impassioned, and they have things that they want, and they're trying to present it in a good ethical manner here. But the one thing that just overwhelms me, and it made me decide to say this, is I heard that the county asked for $5 million in cuts. This is the bottom line. The county asked for $5 million in cuts, and as what's been presented, the cuts that are trying to be imposed, because we're not negotiating, equal $12.5 million. Now, that's just simply not ethical. That's not fair. That's not bargaining in good faith. They can do anything they want with numbers. We know what they say about statisticians. But just everything else done with, how you could sit there and say, "We're going to impose 2.5%, 2.5 times more than what we asked for to start with because we can, and we're going to use some issues of the economy to do that," I don't know how you go back and you face the people of your districts who are receiving less services because of these cuts. I don't know how you can do that ethically. Speaking of ethics, we have one-time monies that come back from overbudgeting every year for 10 years. You know, an auditor said it's true. $450 million in the last 10 years. I think they said something like $30 million came back this year, which is six times as much as what you're asking for in cuts, but you say you can't use them. I think that's unethical. Now, I've been told that it's legal. You can do that. But I still think that maybe the state attorney general should look at that, because it just doesn't make sense. It doesn't seem fair. It doesn't seem like you do a budget that's reflective, that represents the people of the county the best, because we're cutting those budgets. And then I guess just the last thing I'd want to say is protect the retirees. It is unethical, and it is cruel to take somebody on an average of $14,000 and say, "We're going to now impose 20% medical cuts." That's just horrible. And if you can vote for that, you know, then you have to go home, you have to sleep with it, you have to live with it yourself. It says a lot about the kind of person you are. But I'd really like to see us go back to the bargaining table and work out some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This gentleman, and then is there anybody else? Okay, we'll wrap it up with this gentleman. Good morning.
I'm Tom Jones. I live in Auburn. A member of the public. I promised myself I wouldn't get up and speak, but I'm going to. I cannot understand how the wonderful employees of Placer County could be so poorly represented by their union. I listened to an attack on our county exec. I heard demagoguery on how much management makes versus the poor little working person, and I think that's disgusting. You folks have to plan for some pretty terrible times. We all understand that. You also have to understand there should be a relationship between the job market and the pay scale. Now, we have to make some changes. You are making changes that are going to impact my grandkids. I applaud frankly your patience, the professionalism in which you're dealing with, but after listening to the rank-and-file that are represented here today, I don't see why you would even consider mediation. Vote what you have to vote.
Thank you, sir. All right. At this point, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for discussion. Board members have any questions of staff? I have a couple of quick questions. I'm not seeing anybody's light fire up. Couple of quick questions. If we could, please, just briefly, throw up the fund balance slide again. The second-to-last gentleman had the question in regard to the fund balance, and we've heard a couple of people make reference to the fund balance. So let's see if we can, one more time, try to get clarification on this fund balance issue. So if we could have the slides back up? Thank you. And let's go, I believe it is slide number 34222. Numbers five and six, please. Slide five and then slide six. Thank you. So slide five shows, the blue line, our fund balance rollover, which, you know, I've referred to as essentially an operating reserve. The fund balance rollover is primarily driven by setting aside the funds to fully fund all of our positions, all of our services, everything, yet maintaining positions unfilled that are funded. And that's our primary fund balance driver right there, is it not? Is we have positions that we say, "Okay, we budgeted the money to fill them this year, but if we don't have the need to fill them, if we don't fill them, we know that money will roll over to next year." So it's kind of the worst-case, have to hire everybody because of whatever reason, takes us to zero fund balance rollover. Now, in prior years, and if you could go to the next slide, Greg, in prior years, what you'll see is, in terms of the fund balance, and the gentleman referenced the $30 million, what you'll see is where those fund balance dollars were used. They're annual budgeted expenditures that result in savings primarily from not filling funded positions but unfilled. And what the board had done very prudently over the previous years was say, "Okay, these are one-time dollars that we have as savings in our budget, so we are going to commit these primarily to one-time expenses. $23 million for capital projects, road overlays." The OPEB contribution, this board made a commitment to you folks a number of years ago that we were going to fund OPEB and reduce that liability. It's resulted in some good annual required contribution savings by virtue of this board making a commitment that we were going to honor the commitment to you and make sure that that was funded. What we see today is, rather than the combined amount up there represented, almost $40 million in fund balance carryover that we were able to commit to primarily just one-time things, we are now, jumping back to the previous slide, if you would, Greg, slide five. Thank you. We are now seeing 2/3 of our fund balance carryover going to pay for existing filled positions, annual operations, in the next year. So that fund balance carryover that's being used for operations has grown to 2/3 of our fund balance carryover, now leaving us just $10 million that we can put into one-time expenses and for capital projects primarily, and also appropriations for contingencies. So hopefully, we now have some clarity around this number that keeps getting bandied about from 40 to 30 to 40 million dollars that the county carries over year over year. When we make our budget, we do say, "If all positions are filled and funded, here's how much we'll spend." And yes, we do hope that we won't have to fill and fund all of those positions, and so that's where we come up. That's where we come up with this. But I think the most telling, most telling part of that is that rather dramatic rise from '07 through the end of fiscal year '10 in fund balance being contributed to annual operating costs to meet our payroll, to do those things. There was a number that was thrown out that the savings imposed, or the savings that would be realized under the imposition of this contract, is $12.5 million. In fiscal year, understanding that first fiscal year is half-year, in the first year, what are we looking at by way of savings for the imposition of this contract?
Trace Leonard again with the executive office. The PPEO savings that are going to be represented in fiscal year 1011 are currently estimated at $1.9 million. Predominantly, the reason for that is because health insurance, dental savings, any other kind of cost sharing will occur mid-year.
Right.
And so as we look forward into the next fiscal year, that number will double to about $3.8 million.
Okay. So the imposition of this contract is roughly a $3.8 million annual operating savings to the county?
Related to PPEO represented employees.
Thank you. Okay. So the number the gentleman said, when you said they were asked for $5 million, somehow we're taking $12.5 million. It's actually less than the five. It's 3.8 that we're realizing under this agreement.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I could just jump in. There has also been the five MTO days, which is separate from that. So if you take that $1.8 million for this fiscal year, plus the five MTO days, which balance out about $2 million something? Is that right? So it is pretty close to the $4 million?
Thank you.
Over this fiscal year?
Thank you. I'm simply, in recognizing that the MTO days are separate and apart from this, having been previously negotiated with the union. I have more comments, but I didn't have any additional questions of staff, so are there other questions that board members have or comments at this point? Supervisor Wigan?
I'd like a more developed discussion about the guarantee or lack thereof as it related to if we don't impose and our opportunity to have an open enrollment.
It is my understanding that the open enrollment period, as I mentioned, begins on Monday, September 13. I am not aware of any second open enrollment in the absence of an agreement reached with the union, so that if there were any, were further negotiations, but no agreement reached, it's my understanding that there is no second open enrollment until approximately September 13th, 2011. So there would not be, for this year, an opportunity to have the 80-20 premium cost sharing that the deputies and other employees have. We'd have to wait a year. That's my understanding.
Anything else, Supervisor Wigan? No? Okay. All right. Well, seeing no other lights, I'll go ahead and make a couple of additional comments based on what we've heard. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah. I do have some comments. I think the issue of the three hours to respond to the LBFO, I'm very disturbed by that. I really sincerely believe that we owe it to the membership to allow PPEO to go back and poll them on the LBFO and see if there is some kind of outcome out of this that might surprise all of us. The fact that we did this in years past and got a 90% positive response to that leads me to believe that people do understand the seriousness of what's facing them, and giving the opportunity to actually weigh in on it is a good thing rather than a bad thing. I've already discussed my concerns regarding willingness to mediate. I think it's critical. I'm a big fan of mediation. I've seen it work. I've seen it work when parties were diametrically opposed. I don't see any downside to going back and mediating. I am very, very concerned about the impacts on the retirees. Current employees, as difficult as this could be, have the ability to adapt to these proposed changes. Retirees who are on fixed incomes and maybe in ill-health and unable to go find a part-time job at Walmart or wherever, this is going to be incredibly difficult for them to deal with. I am deeply concerned about those impacts. The sick leave cap, I'm also deeply concerned about. I think it really does penalize people who have done their jobs, who have not taken sick leave willy-nilly. I just, I was one of those employees who didn't take a lot of sick leave when I was working for a big company, and I considered that I was a more valuable employee because of that. I was there when people needed me, and to penalize people for being healthy and showing up to work is just a disgrace, in my opinion. I'm going to be voting no on the imposition.
Okay. Supervisor McCallum?
I think that this, you know, it's a tough decision. I think that the rank-and-file of PPEO has been very poorly represented. I think we've had ample opportunity and discussion, 11 meetings, and no change at all was offered from the union side. They weren't willing to accept anything. We have to make long-term plans so that you have a retirement when you retire. That's what the OPEB is for. If we don't continue to pay that and put money aside, you won't have any retirement. And I go back to the private sector. If you're in the private sector, in this economy, you probably don't have a retirement either. But I think it's the right thing to do. It's going to be, it's going to be a burden on retirees, but there's no way to separate this out. I'm not happy about the retirees, but I think as far as this last best and final, I think that Local 39 has basically drugged their feet in a deliberate attempt to drag this out, and I can't see where there's any advantage to going to mediation. So I'm going to vote yes.
Supervisor Wigan?
Just off of my comments and observations, I think I'm going to start by saying that, well, first of all, I appreciate everybody being here and the comments that they've made, the time that they've taken. made, time that they've taken. In the end, I want to point out that we are going to have to negotiate a relationship with each other. Our primary responsibility is to the citizens that we serve, all of us, and in the end, we need to get back to that kind of a healthy relationship. And everybody's got an economic opinion, but mine is that the economy, this clearly, it's not an opinion. It's a matter of fact that this economy is the worst economy since the Great Depression. And most of what, all of what I read indicates that there is no economist out there who expects it to turn around in the short term. So with that in the budgeting process, I think the citizens of this county have been very well served by the fact that year in and year out, when we guess at our next year, which is what our budget is, it's a set of projections, it's a guess. We don't know what those numbers are actually going to be until they occur. But we guess conservatively that in the end, we have always had revenues greater than what we expected, or expenses less than what we guessed, or a combination of those two coming together to result in a fund balance. We don't come in under budget, if you will. Our taxpayers would be horribly served if, in fact, we did that. How we use those monies, I think, are a reflection of the fundamental change in the economy. The board, I think, over time, noting that I'm old enough to retire.
Not from here.
But I don't have a retirement. But it is my choice, so I'm not complaining. But we've done a good job of recognizing when there are one-time revenues, we invest in one-time investments. We don't try to manage our budget so that we're paying year in and year out for ongoing expenses out of one-time revenue streams. Clearly, if you look at the actual numbers and you look at the components within how we have spent our fund balance, as Kirk has discussed, more and more of that money is being needed just to open up our doors in the morning, to provide our services. We're making less investments in important infrastructure for horribly desperately needed improvements in our facilities. A lot of our employees work in a facility that was designed as a hospital for World War II military folks. There are a lot of other infrastructure investments that we continue to need to make. We have discontinued adding new funds to our open space reserve, an investment that has tremendously served and distinguished Placer County. Times are difficult. They're tough. And clearly, what we need to do is decrease our ongoing day-to-day operating expenses. And since we provide services to our citizens, that's driven by salaries and wages. And if, it's clear to me, and I think to most, that in order to do that, one place to logically do it that is a good balance, that doesn't injure employees more than necessary, is to have a greater participation by our employees in retirement and healthcare. And that has, for me, been a starter in this whole process. So with that, and with the lack of the opportunity, if we do not go to impasse today to take advantage of that for potentially another full year, and the cost impact that that's going to have on our ongoing budget, but particularly over this next year, it's clear to me that proceeding with Staff Recommendation Day is the only responsible thing we can do for our citizens. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Holmes.
This is indeed a really, one of the toughest decisions that I've had to make and this board has to make. But our job up here is to look at the long-term fiscal health of this county. And all indications are that it's not going to get any better real soon. I think what's been lost in the discussion, we appreciate the agreement of the MTO days last year, of all of our employees saving us about $6.7 million. But what gets lost is that we've saved a lot of jobs. In the last two years, we've only had to lay off less than 20 employees. Those people are still working, still producing, still buying local products and spending their money locally. And then 80 percent of the county paying insurance costs. I can't think of anyplace else that pays that much towards health insurance for employees. And so it's a tough decision, but I have to support staff's recommendation.
Thank you. And my final thoughts, just as we look at this on a line-by-line basis, let's take the sick leave cap. 600 hours. 600 hours is, what is it, 75 days? 75 days, 15 weeks of sick leave that somebody can accrue. I've held senior management positions at two publicly traded companies. As a starting employee, the most generous vacation-sick leave combination I received was three weeks of accrued vacation, two weeks of accrued sick leave. That capped out in year five of employment at six weeks of accrued vacation, four weeks of accrued sick. And that was the cap for a five-year employee in a publicly traded company with a market cap that was fairly healthy. Here, we're talking about 600 hours of sick leave with no cap on vacation. So let's, you know, compare kind of the real world versus what we're talking about here. And in terms of the retirement contribution, the most generous retirement contribution I received was a 401K match of up to 7 percent of my salary. If I put in 7 percent of my salary, the company would put in 7 percent. And that was it. And that was the one-time contribution they were obligated for. And beyond that, they kind of pat you on the back and say, hope you manage it well. Good luck. So our retirement contribution, our sick leave contribution, our vacation contribution are clearly still, even under this cap and the additional contribution, extremely generous compared to the rest of the real world. Now, to that point, the one gentleman got up and rightly said, we serve on the board. It's our choice as supervisors to do this job and make $30,000 a year. It's our choice. It's your choice to be a county employee. Not one of you is chained to your desk. If you don't like the compensation structure, if you don't like the job security, if you don't like the benefits, if you don't like that stuff, just as nobody's making us serve up here for $30,000 a year, nobody's forcing any of you to remain in county employment. So with that, I would encourage you, encourage all of us, as we look at this much larger picture of managing ourselves through this tough time and into the new economic reality that is set well below where we were earlier this decade, we have some tough decisions that need to be made so as to avoid dealing with exactly what the state of California is dealing with right now. The state of California is in the situation they're in right now, having kicked the can down the road year after year, and that's why we don't have a budget. Because earlier on, they weren't able to make the tough decisions that needed to be made that resulted in us getting where we are. So, ma'am, do you need some assistance?
I'm okay. Go. Sorry.
Need some help?
I'm going to run it in.
Uh-oh. I don't know. So it's not an easy decision for any of us to make. It's where we find ourselves, hopefully, for the long-term fiscal solvency of this county, so that long-term, we can meet our obligations to our current and our former employees. So with that, do we have a motion?
Motion that we, I'm just quoting that A, correct?
Yes.
That we go along with the staff's recommendation and approve the request.
Okay. Counsel wants to offer, I think, a bit of advice here on how we word this.
If you go to page seven, actions requested, I would suggest and first and foremost that you take a distinct vote on item one, adopting the attached resolution imposing the proposals contained with the county's last best and final offer.
Do you want me to turn it down like that?
I think I just, if you would say that's your motion, I think we can get a second.
I'll read my motion.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt the last best and final that was submitted on August 11, 2010 by the County Placer and Public Employees Organization. Roll call on that, please.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
No.
Euler?
Aye. Passes.
My second recommendation would be that we skip down to item four, and we approve three resolutions to implement the CalPERS employee retirement contributions. Those are the last three attachments, four, five, and six, which were listed in page 10 of your agenda.
I'm not that motion. Second.
Motion, Rockholm, second, Wygant, to approve the three resolutions that are the attachments, listed as attachments, one through-
No, four, five, and six.
I'm sorry. Four, five, and six to our agenda. Roll call, please.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
No.
Euler?
Aye.
Finally, we have the introduction of two ordinances under items two and three. You don't really need to vote on an introduction of an ordinance, but I would like a vote from the board to direct staff to bring it back for a second reading, so votes helpful.
So move. Second.
Motion, Rockholm, second, Wygant, to introduce the two ordinances outlined in our agenda packet.
There's actually three ordinances.
Three ordinances, I'm sorry, you're right. The three ordinances outlined in our agenda packet. Roll call, please.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
No.
Euler?
Aye. Okay. That concludes the action of the board on this item. Thank you very much for your participation. We'll move on to item B, which is safety management, management elected department heads, confidential and unclassified employees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Teresa Leonard with the executive office. As was noted previously-
Why don't you wait just one sec, Teresa? Let's let folks have a minute to file out. Okay. Why don't we go ahead and pick up on this item?
As was noted previously, the management team met with our county executive officer back in December and January and became aware of the fiscal condition of the county moving forward into fiscal year 10-11. Through the series of meetings, we brought forward to your board the recommendation in February. That was endorsed essentially by the management team for nine MTO days, no COLA, and 80/20 health cost sharing starting in benefit year 2011. On that meeting date, your board approved in concept those adjustments and directed the negotiating team to go back to PPEO and negotiate similar adjustments. Since that time, your board has implemented office closures for five days in fiscal year 10-11, and also suspended merit increases for the management team during that same period of time. As recently as last week, the executive officer reconvened meetings with the management team to discuss where we are today. And essentially, based on the five days of office closure, we're a little bit short of the nine MTOs that were agreed to by the management team. And the executive officer has asked for recommendations to bring back to your board from the management team to close the gap, if you will, between what was originally recommended and where we are today. And so today's actions are to put the management team essentially, and confidential team, on an 80/20 health cost sharing formula, similar to what has just been approved by your board for PPEO. In addition to that, there are some other open enrollment items that are included in this, such as part-time benefit ratios, which are already implemented with PPEO and DSA, and we're just sort of catching up with the management team, and the $130 in lieu of health payment reduced from the current formula that we currently enjoy.
Any questions of staff or board members? Okay, seeing none, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item? Okay. Bring it back to the board for action.
With approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second in order to both introduce the unclassified ordinance adjusting compensation benefits of elected department heads, management, and management safety, and confidential employees, as well as introducing the ordinance adjusting compensation benefits unclassified non-management employees. Roll call, please.
Rockholm?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. Okay. Unless there is, no, there are no other closed session items.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, I'm sorry, Supervisor.
I just wanted to thank Dick Whitmore and Mike Boyle and all of the team that have been going through these negotiations. You were maligned heavily here today, as was our CEO, Tom Miller. It's not easy, you know, I know people will think that it was easy for us to make that decision, but if we don't make the decisions now and start punting down the road like the state has done, Placer County will be in that same position. And this will set us up in a good position, but thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by board members? Seeing none, we are adjourned for the day. Be back here next week.